Everybody good? Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the November 17th, 2020 meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Allman, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeChau?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emick?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rohauser?
Here.
And I'm present.
Thank you. First up, we have our presentations, our fall athletic recognitions with Dr. Weisling.
I'm pleased to be here this evening, first of all, to say that we made it through a fall athletic season. We are gearing up for the winter season, and that's to be determined yet soon, but we are planning on moving forward. But we're here to celebrate some of our athletes who progressed beyond the regular season and advanced into our postseason play. And our first one up this evening we want to recognize is Trevor Snyder, and he was a member of our golf team, and he advanced to district golf tournament. He was also identified as an All-Star for the league. So I have Coach Jordan here. I don't know if Coach, if you'd like to make a few words and really talk about his fantastic play in his rounds?
Thank you. I'd just like to, Trevor, I had the privilege of coaching Trevor's older brother Logan for four years, so now I've had Trevor, this is his second year. He was an All-Star as a freshman, he's an All-Star as a sophomore. I'm sure he's going to be an All-Star as a junior and a senior. He advanced to the second day of districts, all but a couple bad holes, and he'd been playing in states. But the best I have to say about Trevor is his work ethic. I don't know how many of you are golfers, but if you want to be a good golfer, you got to work. You got to work. And this young man has tremendous work ethic. His brother had it. I attribute that to his mother and father, Duke and Lori, who support their boys all the way around. These guys were at the golf course. I couldn't go there any day that I didn't see one of them there. So I commend Trevor in his accomplishments. I'm proud of him. I think the district should be proud of him, and I look forward to being in states as a junior and a senior. So, thank you very much.
Congratulations. We're going to be terrified. Congratulations.
I just learned, speaking with Mr. and Mrs. Snyder, that they were also Dover, they are Dover residents, were born and raised, and were graduates, and Mr. Snyder was also a member of the golf team a few years ago. So I want to welcome Mr. and Mrs. Snyder here and thank them for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to recognize some members of our cross-country teams. We had three cross-country runners advance to districts. We have two of them here this evening. Our third one, Tyler Rackley, was unable to attend this evening. So I have one of our coaches, who, by the way, Mrs. Miller stepped in at the last minute to take on the role as head coach, and did an outstanding job in that last-minute assignment, and really, really added to the quality of the return to cross-country running here on a home course that we were able to get that hadn't been present for the last two or three seasons. So we're very proud of that. So I'm going to pass the mic over to Mrs. Miller to make a few comments.
Hi, good evening. So first, I do want to thank you for having the ability to have our home cross-country course here. Like he said, it was the first time in two years. So that was fun for these guys because they've never run, they're both sophomores, they've never run a home cross-country meet. So I will recognize Summer first. So this is Summer Hogan. Summer actually holds our course record on our home cross-country course. She got that this year. She had it, lost it, and got it back. So she now holds our record. So she was 11th at counties, got an 11th place medal, and that qualified her to go to districts. She was 29th out of 88 runners at districts. And I will just say, she did not make it to states, but if this were last year, it is a lot harder to make it this year because of COVID, so they were taking less runners. So she would have made it to states had it been a normal year, too. So we will get there next year. Next, I'll recognize Tyler Rackley, who is not here tonight. So he got a 22nd medal at counties, and they took the top 10 to go on to districts, and he was number 10. So he got to go to districts. He was 50th at districts out of 88. So, and then lastly, I'll recognize Jensen over here. Jensen was 21st at counties, and he was the ninth runner to make the districts. So he did run at districts at Big Spring, and he was 47th there out of 88. So I know his goal was to either beat Tyler, which he did twice, or get under 17, I think, was his goal. But I had to laugh because he said at the beginning, his PR last year was a 1734, and he said, "I don't know how I did that, because there's no way I'm going to get to a 1734." Well, at districts, he ran a 1710. So he did do it. So, all right, so congratulations, guys.
And I do also want to recognize Mr. and Mrs. Hogan here this evening. Thank you for bringing Summer, I appreciate it. It was good seeing you. Best of luck on Friday.
Mrs. Hogan's defending her dissertation on Friday, so I just, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Board of Directors. Thank you for your support, I appreciate it, and we are excited about what we're doing for our athletic programs and looking forward to bringing some postseason winners here after our winter season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weisling. Okay, we have our first public comment period. Do we have anybody for public comment tonight, do we now?
Is Christina, do we have, Pat, is Christine out there? Do we have anyone for public? Christina, any public comment?
No, I don't see anybody else.
Okay.
I don't see Christina, but I don't see anyone.
All right, we'll move on then to Board President's Communication. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel matters that are on the agenda and for Washington Township update. So with that, we'll move into the approval of the minutes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 20th, 2020 board meeting.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Allman? Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 22nd, 2020 board planning meeting.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion in multiple seconds. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Allman? Now we'll move on to our Policy Committee summary. Mrs. Kroom?
On November 10th, we had a policy committee. So tonight, there are a number of policies on, for your approval from last month's committee meeting, so they're there, but there are two additional ones that the policy committee met about and felt we can move right to policy, right for your approval. 123.2, sudden cardiac arrest. This is a new policy recommended by PSBA. Both Brad and Troy worked on that policy, and it is, it's compliant, and we want you to, we would like you to approve it tonight. Then 904, public event, public attendance at school events. This is also a recommended policy, and again, involves a lot of athletics, so Troy and Brad looked at them again. So we are asking you to approve them tonight with the other policies on for approval tonight. Additionally, two policies from the committee meeting, we moved on to committees, you will hear on Thursday. Number 249, bullying and cyberbullying. This was reviewed by Kirsten, Nicole, the principals, and so that is going on Thursday night for the committee to look at, and then participate in board meetings. There are a couple changes to that that will go to the committee, and we're, hopefully, then we will bring that to you next voting month. And then finally, there were a number of policies that were reviewed, there were no changes at all, and they're just being marked as updated. So those are listed below as well, and they do not need to come to you because they're the same.
Any questions for Mrs. Kroom? Okay, next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
No move. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mrs. Kroom, did you want to walk down through some of these items and provide us with some highlights?
Yep, so 7.02 is on your agenda for approval. This is a revision to our health and safety plan, and it simply reflects the new guidance from Department of Health today regarding if family or people travel, or staff, travel out of the state and return, and return back to the state, that they must either quarantine for 14 days or get a COVID test. So that is reflected and is up for your approval in the committee. The 2021-2022 calendar, which was reviewed at last month's committee meeting, is also up for your approval tonight. A reminder that our last two years' calendars were very specific to our building project, and this calendar reflects staff feedback and input from two years ago, or three years ago, and we use the same. So this is the exact same model as we had prior to the building project. 7.05, Chapter 339, annual guidance goals. This is an annual revision of our guidance goals. It involves social-emotional goals at each of the levels from elementary, middle school, high school, career goals, and academic goals. So we're asking you to approve that as well tonight. Under the appointments, there are a number of appointments, but a couple I'd like to point out. We are appointing a second and fourth grade teacher tonight. Those two grade levels, class sizes, became very large, and so we wanted to make them smaller, so we are asking the board to approve that. And a computer teacher to replace Dustin Boyd, who is our new Director of Technology, with Mr. Papa's retirement on Friday. So we are asking you to approve him as well tonight. And then there are a couple agreements. The first one with the LIU, we currently have PCAs that work with our special needs students, and this is just an agreement with the LIU that should the district go virtual, the PCAs go with the students, and also would provide support online. And 718, an agreement with the LIU for bilingual psych services. This is a combination of ESL services, if with students who we suspect have disability. And sometime that needs to be in the, it has to be the student's native language, and sometimes it's a combination of languages. So we are asking you to approve that agreement. Additionally, we are asking you to approve the Graham Aquatic Center Agreement for 2020-2021. As you are aware, our pool is not complete, and this will allow our swim team to practice and hold a couple meets, and so we're asking for your approval tonight. And then finally, a reminder that last month, you heard a presentation about the audit from Boyer and Ritter. We're asking you to approve that tonight, and the annual financial report from last year. And that is all. Any questions on any agenda items I didn't discuss?
Yes, I have several questions. First one is related to the updated health and safety plan. You mentioned that if anyone's traveling out of state, they need to either have a COVID test or quarantine for 14 days?
Yes.
For families that would be traveling for the holiday coming up. Just so that they are aware, this may present a challenge that they've not experienced before. What are their options as far as getting the test? What's the turnaround time to find out the results? Can they get that before they actually get back into the state?
Yes.
Maybe if we could give families a little guidance.
So this is actually not new. This has been in our health and safety plan from the very beginning. If we've had, if families left the state, and to any of those designated states that were listed on the travel advisory, they were already aware that they had to quarantine for 14 days. And many of them requested if they got a test, and it was negative, could they return, and we allowed that. So this isn't new information, but we are definitely going to communicate this with families. So from my understanding, they can go to urgent care. I don't know if there are any testing sites in New York to get the test, but they can also get the test prior to leaving where they are leaving and bring a positive test home with them. And I know there are rapid testing sites all over the country, and I'm sure in other areas there are as well. So they can do that, and they're just not allowed to return to school. However, they can go online immediately when they return. So we've been doing that, so, but we will be sharing that information out with families.
And Tracy?
And that applies to every state? Now there's no limits on which state?
Yes. It's no longer the states in question, it's now if you leave the state and when you return. So it's if you travel outstate, yes. That's the change.
Okay.
Can you just talk a little bit about what does that process look like for parents who come back and now they are, you know, not expecting it, but now are looking to like, oh, I need to figure out, you know, if they don't want to do a test, if they just want to do the quarantine for two weeks?
Right.
What's the process that they should go through to notify, like, do they notify teachers?
Yep, absolutely. They would notify their principal and let them know the situation they're in, and let them know that they will be going online, so the principal can notify the teachers. And then they can, you know, wait out that 14 days. Or if they come back here and get a COVID test, and it takes three, four, or five days, then they just, they just have to notify the principal that, in fact, that they are going online for those days.
And then the other question that I had is related to the Graham Center. I'm not familiar with that, but where is that located?
You want to talk a little bit, Troy, about it? It's Dover's YMCA. Dover's YMCA? No, not Dover's YMCA.
On Newberry Street in New York. In New York, yes. It's part of the York YMCA, but it's a separate aquatic center. It's beautiful. I've seen aerial views of it, I've not actually been there. But we, I attempted to seek a pool in many other venues, some that were school-related, and of course, COVID, like us, we are, it's restricting who we're allowing from outside organizations to come into our facilities. That's what we encountered. You know, we had partnered with, I'm understanding, we had partnered with some other school districts in the past, but that just, so we reached out to those first, but they weren't available because of the board decisions not to allow outside organizations. Checked with some other local colleges and universities, same reasons. Graham Aquatic Center is gracious enough to offer its facilities for us, and it is part of, it is the York YMCA.
Okay. And then a follow-up question on that. Do they have limitations as far as who can access that? Will it just be the students and coaches, similar to what we currently have in our facilities, that sort of thing? Or will parents be able to?
For practices right now, which is the majority of what we're utilizing the facility for, our daily practices, that'll just be, we will transport the students and the coaches down to that facility. In the evening, they will practice and be returned here for parents to pick up on-site here. We are hosting one home event there on January 7th, which was supposed to be a home hosted event anyway, at that time. The Y Graham Aquatic will also have to adhere to the same indoor gathering occupancy limits that school districts do. So I am, I have not seen their standard operating procedures yet. That is coming, and Denise Johnson, the director who I've been working with to set up this agreement, needs to forward that to me yet. But just like the schools are developing the health and safety plans, that facility also has a health and safety plan, so that will be spelled out. So, but I don't know that for sure, but I can imagine that it's going to be, because they have the same indoor gathering limitations, there will not be spectators. Now, that being said, it is our home hosted event, and as a member of the York Adams League, we have all agreed that for our home events, we would only be allowing home spectators. And so I'll wait and see what Graham Aquatic standard operating procedures indicate regarding the allowance of any home spectators or not. It'll be based on their size, capacity.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Other than the rental fee, is transportation fees also involved in this?
There are transportation fees involved with this.
Is there any other fees other than the transportation and the rental fee?
No.
And we are going to go after the?
Yes, we are.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we are.
Any other questions on the items tonight? Okay, Mrs. Allman? Okay. Now we'll move on to the Curriculum and Professional Development category. We do have a voting item here tonight, so I will entertain a motion to approve independent study requests for credit during the 2020-2021 school year.
No move.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, I will be abstaining from this vote because it does impact my daughter. Moving on to Human and Fiscal Resources, I'll entertain a motion to approve an extended unpaid leave of absence for Amy Kraus through the end of the 2020-2021 school year.
No move. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Mrs. Allman? Okay, moving on to Capital Projects, I'll entertain a motion to approve the high school change orders as follows. Lowbar Inc., number 12, $578.16. Lowbar 13, $611.94. Lowbar 14, $2,013.63. Lowbar 15, $3,045.72. Lowbar 16, $2,053.35. Lowbar 17, $16,766.79. Lowbar 26, $1,0891.23. York Excavating 18 for $9,696.31. York Excavating 19 for $17,009.42.17. York Excavating number 20 for $2,003.04.57. York Excavating 21 for $17,333.61. And finally, York Excavating 22 for $2,364.89. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, would you like to give us an update on these?
Okay, the first one, Lowbar number 12 for $578.16, was to, we had to add another data rack for the technology, and this was to get power to that data rack. The second one, number 13 for $611.94, is, we kind of forgot to add a time clock for the people to punch in and out, so this was to add the time clock. It was only one time clock, so it was just the, we had to get a wire down inside a wall and power to it. The third one, number 14 for $2,113.63, was to do an additional exhaust fan in an area where they had missed the exhaust fan. So this was for the electrical side of that. And then this, number 15 for $34.50.72. The building has 11, I think I'm right, 11 folding doors for, most of them are for fire, like a fire break, if you will, a fire door, and, but there's two, three of them that are for just security access to control public when they come into buildings, so they don't go where they're not supposed to. And this is to add a couple key switches. They only had key switches on the one side, which doesn't allow us to open it from either side, so we had to add a couple key switches. Normally with the fire door, you don't have to do that because they have like a panic bar on, but when you use them for control, you can't, you need the key switches. And then number 16 was to add an additional circuit for a kiln in the art room. And number 17 was, our electrical switchgear, if you haven't been up on Intermead Avenue, our switchgear for the school now sits on the road almost, and it's pretty big, and the inspector is requiring us to put bollards around that switchgear so nobody can run into, which, it's a good idea, don't get me wrong, just something that never was thought of, because it was in a road den. And then this number 26 for $1,891.23 was to put a Corian desktop on in lieu of, for MICA. We thought it might hold up better on the help desk since there's going to be a lot of activity there. York Excavating, number 18 for $9,696.31, was, there was a change in how we had to pave out Intermead Avenue to make water shed off the road, and that's what this was for. And then number 19 for $17,942.17 was, it's called an asphalt adjustment index. When they bid the project, of course, it's like gasoline, you don't know how much it's going to be a year or two years later, and that's what this is for. The price went up on asphalt based on petroleum, because that's mainly what asphalt is. And then number 20 for York Excavating, again, they had grass in our batting cages, and after much talk, we thought that wasn't a real good idea because it's going to wear down, and it's going to be hard to keep growing and stuff like that, so we elected to put warning track mix in instead of putting grass in. It's kind of like a stone-sand mixture, so we put that in for $2,304.57. Number 21 is unsuitable soils at North Salem Site. We had put the blacktop in, and then as we ran trucks and stuff over, it just chewed it up, something terrible. So we actually, if you noticed on this, we split the cost of this because we didn't think it was all our fault, so we were only actually paying half of what it would have been. But that was to replace soils with stone. And then number 22 for $2,364.89, that was our October asphalt index. This should be the last, hopefully, the last asphalt index. We only have a small portion of asphalt to put in yet, and we can't put that in until the pool's finished, so hopefully it won't be another one. And that should be the last one.
Any questions?
The, Mr. Nelson, the asphalt index, just curiosity, the price of petroleum hasn't really risen in the last few years, has it?
Well, you have to go back three years.
I'm thinking three years ago.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. I know it is different. I know it is different, so. I can't tell you how much it was then and what it is now, but I know it's different from what it was three, I mean, you have to realize, this was when we were bidding the project is when this asphalt pricing came about, which was, help me out here, 2018?
Yeah.
Probably early 2018, when they were bidding, when they were working their bid up for this, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Allman? Okay, next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the middle school change orders as follows. ECI Construction 29 for $4,009.15. ECI for, number 30 for $1,0876.32. ECI 31 for $2,0341. ECI 32 for $9,800. ECI 32 for $9,898. ECI number 33 for $2,341. ECI number 34 for $3,268. ECI number 36 for $1,006.28. And ECI 37 for $34,660. And we have MICA Mechanical number four at $1,540.70. MICA Mechanical number five for $15,139.42. And MICA number six for $10,414.52. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Nelson?
Okay, the first one, this is on the middle school project now, was when we tore off the roof and went to add the new roof, we realized there was a differentiation between the two roof lines, so we had to do some extra buildup of material to make the roofs level out, and there was some deteriorated rod material in the process for $4,915. Number 30 for $1,876.32, these are those round red balls that are sitting out front. When we put the gate in, and the way the ball, the number of balls that we had ordered and thought was going to cover it, left a hole big enough that I could drive through it with my car, so if I can drive through it, somebody else could drive through it, and we didn't think that was a good idea, so we actually added two of these balls, like the target balls, if you will. Number 31 for $2,341, this was a request by us to help us hang the smart boards to catch up in, to help technology catch up at the middle school, so we had used some ECI people to go in and actually hang all these smart boards like that in the, pretty much the entire school. Number 32, one of the things we discovered when we were demoing and doing some work down in the locker room is we had some major leakage coming through the floors from the shower rooms, and the shower room for the girls is above the boys, so literally if you fell through the floor, you'd fall from the girls' shower room into the boys' shower room. But we had some leakage, and it, we had ended up, ended up having to put a new ceiling in there, and the only way to stop the leakage was to either tear all the tile up and re-tile it, or to cover it with, basically, it's a rubberized material like we put in the locker room, so we elected to do that. It's going to spruce it up a little bit, it's going to cure our leakage problem around the tile, and we thought we were doing that one. For equity, let's do the one below it, so this is for both the male and the female, or boys' and girls' locker rooms to do that. The next one, number 33 for $2,341, is to demo the terrazzo base in the auditorium lobby. We had, in the plans to cover that terrazzo with a luxury vinyl tile because there's so many transitions with making the lobby bigger, we didn't have flooring in some areas, and it's just going to be concrete, it would have been extremely difficult to put terrazzo back in, so we decided to put the luxury vinyl tile on. But there was a four-inch cove, cove base around it, which was terrazzo, kind of a yellow color, and we just, after we started looking at it and we laid down this tile, it just didn't look good, so we decided to take that four-inch base out, and that's what this is for, to take that base out. And number 34, in the process of putting the elevator in the locker rooms to get between the different floors, so we're now handicapped accessible, we ran into a 14-inch I-beam, and we had to cut it out and put a new one in. That's 32, $3,268. Number 36 for $1,628 was part of that locker room beam cutting, we had to get somebody in to cut it, which was, which was really, really labor-intensive. And then, number 37, site, site sign changes, this is the digital sign for out in front of the building, like the electronic sign. And then, number four for MICA Mechanical, $1,540.70, was, we had to add some condensate piping from an air, an air handler. And then, this next one, I wanted to bring something along tonight, and I walked out and totally forgot it, but $15,139.42 was trying to find and repair a gas leak. So in the process of running gas lines, one of the things that you have to do is, you have to pressurize the line and make sure it doesn't leak. Before you put gas in it, that's what you have to do. You put 20 pounds of air in it, and it has to hold for at least two hours. When we'd put 20 pounds of air, it was going in 30 seconds, so we knew we had a leak. And we kept narrowing it down, and it takes a while when you're talking about a line that's six inches in diameter. So we ended up, we figured out it's in the courtyard between the science rooms and the basement. So we dug, dug it up, took a spot, dug down, cut the pipe, put two plug valves on the end, pressurized the one side, it was fine, pressurized the other side, nothing. We're dealing with like 50 foot of pipe, so now we're at the point, we got to dig it up. So we started digging from where we opened it up, and about 12 feet from the entrance alongside the science wings, we found a hole in gas pipe, you could have stuck a golf ball in it. When they did the renovation, we're not so sure exactly which renovation of the high school, whether it was in 99 or 91, whichever, whenever they did that, when you put steel gas line in the ground, one of the things that comes, it comes wrapped in like a plastic, it almost looks like it's plastic coated, but everywhere you have to weld it, you have a spot about that big that doesn't have anything on it. So once they weld it, you're supposed to wrap it with this material and coat it, so it doesn't rust, and it doesn't get what's called electrolysis, I don't know if you guys know what that is or not, but, so they didn't do that, they didn't wrap any of them. Right where they welded it, electrolysis ate a hole big enough in the top to put a golf ball in, and two of them in the bottom, I could stick two fingers inside by side. It was about 12 to 15 feet from the entrance door of the school. So had we not searched for it, at some point, it would have went boom. But that's what this was. I have the pipe in my office, I'll, next, I'll bring it Thursday if I think of it and show it to you. It's, when you see it, you're going to say, I can't believe that was ever, and I, we don't know, was it leaking for the last five years, two years? We don't know. It could have just been that it was really rusty, and when we put the 20 pounds in, it kind of blew it open, but it was definitely something that was going to happen at some point, it was going to let, it was going to let go, whether or not we pushed that rust off when we put the pound, pressure in it or not, but it should, six-inch steel pipes should hold 150 pounds of pressure without any problem. And so, it wasn't the pressure, but anyway, that was what this was. It took an immense amount of time and labor to find this. But anyway, we cut it out, put a new piece in, wrapped all the joints with, I forget what they call the stuff, but it's like a, looks like a tape, and then you coat it, so. That was that. And then, the last one, number six, I got a little winded there, sorry. Number six is for $10,414.52, and that was to add a roof drain that we kind of ran into when we started demoing the building, and we had to do something with it once we, once we got there, so. And that's it.
Okay, questions or discussion on any of those items? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Almond? The motion carries. Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to our unity council, Mrs. Mailey and Mrs. Kroom.
Yes, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, we had our meeting on the 5th, it's decently well-attended. We talked about our merchandise fundraiser updates, just trying to figure out the details of the designs and what type, discussing prices, possibly looking at other companies, but we're gathering more information. We're, we were hoping to have things up and running before Thanksgiving, not sure that that's going to happen at this point. And also talked about our November teach-in event, trying to narrow down speakers and when we might do that. And that we probably are going to have to postpone it due to not having enough panelists for that, so more details to come on that. And then, we had just some more open discussion about things, and our next meeting is December 3rd at 6 via Zoom, and the details and minutes are on the website.
Okay. Mrs. Kroom, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Any questions for Mrs. Mailey? Okay, thank you. Next up, York Adams Academy, Mr. Emmig.
Yeah, it was reported this week that the York Learning Center, which York Adams Academy is part of, has, was affected by the pandemic, so they shut that down, and because of that, York Adams Academy was shut down as well. So all those students are learning at home, and we are not having a meeting in November due to Thanksgiving, we will resume in December.
Questions for Mr. Emmig? Thank you. Okay, Mr. DeLauter, York County School of Technology.
Okay, just a couple of things. Number one, again, our budget is being reviewed, they did have an opportunity, but I didn't attend the last meeting because of the same meeting, same night as our meeting here, but superintendents had the opportunity to look at the, the budget and ask any questions, and according to the minutes, that there were no items of concern that were raised by any of the superintendents at that, at those meetings. So it's going to be coming to us next Tuesday for a vote for us, and then once we have it, we approve it, then it will be sent to all the member schools for our ratification as well with that. And then, the other thing, again, if you remember last year, because of the COVID shutdown, same as it was here, all the testing, all the NACI testing, industry certification testing, tests were obviously canceled, which left a lot of our students out there with not having their industry certifications, and a lot of them had jobs that were based upon that. So a survey was sent out to the graduating class and wanted to know what the importance of those NACI certifications and the industry certifications were, and according to this survey, the top priority was the students are looking for their industry certifications. So at this point, the administration is going to work with the graduates and the testing companies and such to try and get those certification tests for them, so that they are able to get into the workforce with the necessary tests. And that is all I have.
Okay. Questions for Mr. DeLauter? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Kroom, LIU.
So the LIU is looking for a representative from either Dover or Northeastern, if they are interested in serving on their board as a board member until June, and then continuing to the election and being put on the ballot to represent Dover and Northeastern until June 30th, 2022. If anyone is interested in that, please let me know, and I will forward your name onto the LIU, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mrs. Kroom? All right, Mr. Ralhauser, Legislative and York Learning Center.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Mrs. Brenton, PSBA.
There are several things that PSBA reported on, one of the things was the general election results. As far as the legislature goes, it was kind of thought that there would be a large amount of Democrats, especially in the southeast, that may cause the House to flip to Democratic control, however, that fell flat, and it still remains in Republican control. However, the Democrats have a completely new slate of leadership members, new, the very first African-American and female minority leader was elected. On the Senate side, they had the very first Republican majority leader, female, was elected on that side. That chamber stays in Republican control as well. Statewide rural offices, there were, there was a little shuffling, some Republicans picked up some seats, those had been, all been held by Democrats as well. To go back to the General Assembly, and all 203 seats were up for a vote in the House, one half of the 50 seats in the Senate were up. According to the results from the Department of State, there are six incumbents defeated, three Democrats on the House side, and possibly two Democrats and one Republican on the Senate side, two open seats in the House flipped. So now, like I said, the House Republicans grow their majority to 112 seats, up from 110. On the Senate side, Republicans expand their majority, one seat to 29, up from 28, and there's one seat out in the Pittsburgh area that is still, the Democratic incumbent is only ahead by 30 votes, so when people say your vote doesn't matter, think twice, because it really does. Some interesting races statewide. So it'll be interesting, the Democratic Education Committee Chairman in the House is also retired, so there'll be a new Democratic Education Committee in, on the House side as well. As far as legislation that PSBA highlighted, one thing to note, and I know it's a priority for Dover, is broadband expansion. There was a broadband expansion bill that was signed into law that allows internet service providers to utilize the infrastructure for electric co-ops. So that's not the actual electric companies, it's the co-ops, like Adams Electric, those types of entities, to, to utilize their infrastructure to expand broadband. It's my understanding that they're going to look to kind of push this more broadly next session to include the regular electric companies as well, so we'll keep an eye on that. Sorry, I got a little into my, that's my world, so I apologize for the.
That's okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Brenton? Okay, Mrs. Herman, Dover Industrial Development Authority.
Okay, while they're still working on putting parcels of land and acreage, acreage and buildings on the website, and they already had listed like the assessed value and who the owner was and price and so on and so forth, but then, we took time at the last meeting to brainstorm what these pieces of land or these buildings could be used for, and we came up with a whole lot of different ideas that can also now be put on the website for people that maybe, oh, you know, as they're paging through, that would be a perfect place for me to put my business and so on. So that was far as a lot of what we did last time, and our next meeting is tomorrow afternoon.
Any questions for Mrs. Herman? Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Kroom, superintendent's report.
Last Wednesday, Jen Lepo sent you an email with a link to a video. If you remember, we talked last month that the York County School of Technology is asking for a 3.59% increase in their budget. This video beautifully explains why they are asking for that, and pretty much, they had a very, two very bad years of high healthcare claims, so it has put them into a position as to why they're increasing their tuition to us. So if you get a minute, you want, might want to take a look at that, and just to put that into perspective, it does affect 91 students, we send 91 students, so that is something important for us to continue doing. We talked, and I think I shared this with you before, you asked previously about our current lunch debt. So as you are aware, this year, students are eating free, so parents aren't paying for lunch unless they're buying milk or an à la carte item. However, we still do have lunch debt from the past, so we continue to meet as a group to figure out how can we bring our lunch debt down, and we have lots of offerings from the community to help with our lunch debt, but we don't have a great procedure on deciding who we help out with this lunch debt. So we are meeting to determine that, but I wanted to share with you, our current negative lunch debt is $41,251.17. Now, that includes both students who we currently have and those who have moved away and didn't pay off their debt. Speaking with Mrs. Lepo, it looks like we're probably going to write off 11,000 of that debt, we're, we're just not going to get that back. We do turn it over to collections agency, we have not received any money yet, so, but we're working, we're trying to take advantage of this year, where we're not getting more in debt, to kind of get that down. As you are aware, and as you're seeing in the news, cyber schools, a number of students have left school districts to go to cyber schools. To remind you, we budgeted for this school year approximately $1.9 million for outside cyber, and again, we pay per student our current, a current rate for regular ed students and then a significantly higher. and then a significantly higher rate for special ed students. And I'm going to guess this, but it's over 11,000, I think, for regular ed students, and it's close to 25,000, 26,000 for special ed students. We are currently not over, we are 900,000 over budget. So, add 900,000 to the 1.9 that we budgeted, and we are over budget on cyber school. So, if we finish this year with all of them staying in cyber school, it will cost us $2.8 million, and we budgeted $1.8 million. So, feeling that this is something we had to get a handle on immediately, and there are lots of reasons for it. You know, we have kids who have been in cyber school. We had families who chose to do cyber school rather than are blended. We started with an elementary cyber that last year we really liked, but then it got big because last year, they only serviced 50 kids. This year, they were servicing 800. It was very different. Parents weren't happy and left us. And we'll, and we'll tell you, we really don't know, they leave, they go to cyber until they've withdrawn already, and then we get the bill. And Mrs. Lepo is constantly coming, I'm going, look at all of these kids who have left to go to cyber. So, we have to try to do everything we can right now to stop that. So, I have Smitta Weakland, who is the Assistant Principal at the high school, is extremely talented with data. She has worked with our cyber school since she started as our Assistant Principal, and she is wonderful with the families. So, I have given her a special project this year that she is really working. She's still the high school Assistant Principal, however, her focus is really on our cyber schools. So, her first order of business is to contact all the families that have left after we started school and to see if we can bring them back. And we think we can. And then, she's going to go after seeing if those who have been in another cyber school might be interested in coming back to us in January. This is hundreds of kids, and we'll take individual phone calls to each one to have a conversation. So, we knew that the time would need to be spent to do, to do that. The second thing I want her to do is to look to the future. Cyber school is not going away. And we, we have not figured it out for our best interest. So, she is putting a cyber plan together for next year. We, we use a company to get to our cyber school, which saves us a tremendous amount of money if they choose our cyber school over an outside cyber school. So, she is researching that, she's working with companies. And then, she's going to put all the procedures in place for every building for how we enroll cyber students. This is really a huge undertaking, it's really a full-time job that up until now, no one had the time, just simply had the time to do. So, I thought it was really important. I have full faith in Smitta, she is a dynamo. She is already working so hard on this, she's already bringing kids back. She's working with me, she's working with Mrs. Lepo, she's working with child accounting. So, I just wanted to share, you might have seen that email, that is her role for this year. We have to stop this, we have to figure this out. Because if COVID is still around in the fall, which I'm sure it will be, many of these families might choose to just stay there another year, and we cannot do that. So, I wanted to share that with you. I also wanted to share with you that the second week of the Thanksgiving, the week after Thanksgiving, I will be sending an email out to parents telling them that through the rest of this winter, snow days will be online. I didn't want to send it out yet, I don't want them to get too confused between Thanksgiving and that online, the procedures that we're using for snow days online and how it will work. So, we will be sending that out shortly, and we're very excited to try to do snow days online. I know there are some questions about, do we really want to do that? Is it better for the kids to just make it up? In my email, I say to the parents, we don't know how many stoppages we're going to have this year. We don't know how many times kids' education is going to be disrupted this year with COVID. So, I think it is really important that we do everything we can to keep their education going every single day. So, so, we're going to send that out. And then, finally, just the last thing I want to talk to you about, because you're seeing it in the news and you're hearing about the data with COVID and the numbers. And I send you weekly emails, I send the staff now, I send them our data. So, I wanted to just kind of share with you that, yes, York County is back in substantial. They were two weeks ago, we went back down to moderate, we were back up to substantial. When that happened, we did receive a phone call from the Department of Health and the Department of Education, all the superintendents, to have a discussion about what that meant. At that time, you know, we do have guidance as to when we should go A B, when we should shut down, when we should go to full online. However, they're very clear that you should take your current state of situation into account. And yes, York County is high, and yes, Dover, the community of Dover is very high. However, we are not seeing the cases in schools, in our schools, that other districts are sadly seeing. So, we feel extremely fortunate, and we are so appreciative every day, that we, we are kind of in the situation we are now. You've seen on the news that a lot of local districts have, have shut down their high school, or there are middle school and high school, I think we have a couple of elementaries, through the Thanksgiving holiday. And all of them are because of cases in the building. They were reaction to cases to try to get control of that. And so, just to kind of remind you that you graciously approved, that revised the calendar in September, that puts us in a position where if, tomorrow's Wednesday, if we are not doing well in the next couple of days, we have a nice break to kind of separate and hopefully keep people apart from each other. So, feeling really good about that. So, I feel very good about that. But everyone, all the schools that have shut down, from, from what I get, from any that I know of, they've not changed their instructional model from either full day in to online. They're just shut down now because they need to do that to get control. So, just to kind of bring you up to date and remind you of our cases, since, since September 8th, we have had 11 student cases of COVID, so for two months, a little more than two months, six at the high school, two at the middle school, one at Dover, one at Live, one at North Salem. And when I say this, none at Weiglestown, you watch, that'll be my phone call tomorrow. And six staff members have been involved, either have been, no, six staff members have been involved. So, again, we have, I send you these emails, I send you these texts. We, we get, we get the call from the parents saying they have it, we immediately contact Department of Health. We give the name, they check it out, they confirm it. And then, we follow our, we then do the close contact tracing. And we follow our process, we have, we have seating charts in every classroom and on every bus, and we pretty quickly are able to do that. And I think being able to do that, it's really served us well. And in those numbers of people who've had it, we've had to quarantine 161 students. And when you think about that we're talking approximately six, 17 people, people who have had it out of 4,000 people in our district, only quarantining 161 isn't, isn't too bad. So, we feel, we feel pretty fortunate in Dover, we really do. And, and again, I need to throw out thanks and kudos to our staff who are just so diligent with this, and they're doing such a great job. But with all that being said, I don't want to lose the fact that, yes, York County is extremely high. And yes, the guidance from Department of Ed says, when you get to this, you do need to consider online instruction. But you do also need to consider your current circumstances. Our data also indicates that Dover is very high. So, Dover is right there, probably higher than York County numbers are. So, I didn't, I felt it would be remiss of me to not go into December where we don't have, you know, a full voting meeting. Is there any discussion you wanted to have now, or any questions you had about us staying open? I will tell you, when we started school, about 25% of our families chose to be either A B or fully online. Many of them have chosen to return back to our buildings and back on our buses. We are now at about 90% of our families are in our buildings every day. So, families are choosing to send their kids to school. So, I, I just wanted to not leave tonight's meeting, see if you wanted to have a discussion about that, if you had concerns that we were still fully online, if you had any questions. I'm going to continue to keep you up to date with that data. It could change next week. So, any questions or concerns?
I do have a question. Obviously, all of this is predicated on self-reporting of symptoms and positive cases by parents and such. Have we seen any suspicious increases in absences or anything like that that may raise some suspicions for us?
We have not. As a matter of fact, every single one of these cases, when we have quarantined those kids, those kids have not become positive, which means we are not seeing spread in our buildings. We, what we're seeing is people are coming into our buildings with COVID cases from outside and from their lives, okay? So, if we would be seeing internal spread, that is concern, and that is a reason to consider shutting down the building, and why I did in the high school. Because we got those cases so quickly, and we knew we had cases pending. We were really concerned that if we waited and learned three days down the road that it truly was community spread in the building, well, now we made it worse. And that was why we shut down the building. But since then, and it ended up not being, by the way, it ended up not being community spread. We have not seen community spread in our building, and we have not seen connections. So, we, we have not seen that we can, now, remember, we have limited information, parents have more information. But we have not seen, oh, this kid's positive, he was at that party last week. And they have, we have not, we have not connected that, we have not connected that.
And then, our absentee rate is, is typical for this time of year?
Well, remember what we told parents. No matter if your child has any signs of illness, please keep them home. So, the sniffles, and unexplained illness, the sniffles, any of those things. So, we are seeing higher absences, but that's a good thing, that means parents are heating that and keeping their kids home. You know, remember in the old days when you sent your kid to school and hoped that they didn't get the temperature, and they figured the nurse would call you and send him home to you? Right. So, we can't have that, and parents have been great. So, no, we are, we are not seeing that. But we are, yeah, sure, we're seeing a higher rate of absences, but we expect that.
I think we've been very fortunate, and I just want to send a reminder out to any parents that might be listening to this meeting tonight. We can hopefully remain as fortunate as we have been by having their cooperation. You know, if a parent or somebody in their household does test positive, please keep your children home, don't send them to school. If you, as Tracy just said, if your child has the sniffles or, you know, a stomach issue or something, keep them at home. That's the only way I think we'll be able to continue down the path that we've been going, you know, rather successfully, you know, this year. And again, we're very fortunate for that. So, I know maybe parents get tired of hearing it over and over and over from the district, but it's important that they hear it over and over and over so that we continue to have that cooperation among our families. So, anybody else?
I was going to ask a question, and I don't know if you can easily answer this, but using our in-house actual situation, taking that into consideration, do you have sort of in your mind a scenario that you think would tip the scales? Like, are you looking at a certain threshold across all of our buildings? Or, or is it just every day you just look at it and you make a decision at that point?
Right. Every day, we look at it, make a decision. However, we look at families. So, if we receive a student has, there's a student case and there are siblings in, in buildings, we really look at that. So, if that would develop, that, that is, that's concerning. That's concerning once we're, once we've spread out. And again, if we all of a sudden have a number of cases in one day, and, and we're, we're connecting them together, then we, we start to have concerns that we have spread among that, that would be a tipping point for me. And, and again, why the Thanksgiving break I felt was so important was just to take a breather from everybody. And, you know, hopefully, everyone will kind of hunker down and social distance really well, and get every, get the kids away from the big groupings of kids. And hopefully, that, you know, we'll come back after Thanksgiving with everyone healthy and we're good again. And let's, you know, we hope. And that was why we added that week after Thanksgiving, to give everyone to come back from Thanksgiving and go, okay, just kind of, if you were with your family, or your, or that college kid came home, brother or sister came home, everybody lay low until, you know, you kind of get over that. So, yeah, we just look every day, and we do look for patterns, and each building principal is doing a great job. They are the ones that are doing all of the close, all of the contact tracing, and they are working so closely with their nurses. So, between the nurses and between the principals, they're doing a phenomenal job. And they'll see the pattern before I will, and they will call me, they will call me. And, and just to let you know, Department of Health keeps a, I didn't know this. Department of Health keeps a record of us. So, they are also looking at patterns. So, if, if we're not seeing it, and we're calling it in, and they, in their contact tracing, pick something up. So, they keep track of all of that as well. I didn't realize that, and they shared that with me. And, and the recent time when I called, they said, oh, yeah, we've seen you have, you've had these cases at the high school. I'm like, wow, really? So, they must, they must be able to pull us up and see it. So, if it's an area, I would think they would be able to connect that for us.
Any other questions for Mrs. Krim?
I do have another question on one of your topics that you discussed earlier, the cyber budget. You mentioned we're 900,000 over that. Is that just on our outside? Is that, I'm sorry.
I won't be able to even answer. Tickle none of water.
I'll, I'll ask the question a while, then you can ponder your response, so you get water. Is that the amount that we have, the, the budgeted amount for just outside cyber? Or does that include our in, our in-house cyber as well?
Just outside.
Just outside.
Or inside is a separate budget item.
Is, are we seeing, or is there any place that we see savings that we're not spending the money on these students that are outside, doing outside cyber that we normally would have been spending money on them? Or is this just totally an extra cost?
Totally an extra cost. Because even with them leaving, you can't reduce class size, you know, so you can't, you know, do something else with the teacher because they could come back. So, no, it's just right now, extra cost. So, just trying to recoup that.
Has there been any discussion, maybe this is a question for Mrs. Brenton, but has there been any discussion about an increased amount of students attending cyber because of COVID? You know, reimbursing any districts for that? Has there, has that even been a topic of?
For years, they've been talking about it, but it doesn't go anywhere.
Well, the only hope, I would say that we would be able to, you know, that wouldn't be anything that is beyond, that would be beyond the normal, what, what we usually would have access to is if there's any kind of COVID relief package that's passed. And at this point, the federal government has been dragging their feet on passing any, you know, the second version of the CARES Act, you know, and time's kind of running short for that. So, that would, I would say that's our best hope, that the federal government would pass something along to the states that we could then draw down from and utilize for something like that. But I would not count on it.
Last year, the state put a moratorium on the, the day we closed, I think it was March 13th. Anybody who left a district, when we all shut down, anybody who left a district and went to cyber at that point, we weren't charged for. So, that was nice, we appreciated that. But of course, a lot of those students left then and stayed. So, this year, we're back to the typical funding of it.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mrs. Krim. Do we have any other miscellaneous comments or observations from our board members tonight? Okay. Dr. Maloney, did we have anybody show up out in the hallway for public comment? Okay. All right. So, with that, our future meetings, this Thursday at 6 o'clock PM, we have our board committee meetings via Zoom, and our board planning meeting at 7 o'clock via livestream. Then, our board reorganization meeting will be at 7 o'clock PM on Thursday, December 3rd. So, if there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Aye? Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.